And please let the record note that with the exception of Ms. Kears, all council members are present this evening. We have no minutes to approve tonight. We do have a schedule of committee meetings, however. Ms. Raybine.
We do, and there is a change in the schedule that's on your desks. We had a late-breaking referral to Committee of the Whole, so we are going to have a Committee of the Whole meeting that will lead us off on Wednesday, the 28th, from 9:20 to 9:50. Brian, do you want to talk a little bit about what that is?
Yeah, thanks, Marty. I just sent you all a notice. A 30-minute Committee of the Whole meeting this Wednesday morning, just putting it in there right before the Public Works meeting. It is regarding a resolution of support for the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and I will have that draft resolution available for people to see tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other changes to the committee's schedule?
There are three more meetings I need to announce.
Well, let's announce those then.
Yes. So, following that Committee of the Whole meeting, Public Works will start at 9:55 and go till 10:50. Land Use and Planning Committee meets from 10:55 to 11:40, and Administration and Finance Committee has the last meeting of the day from 11:45 to 12:30. All of those meetings are being held this coming Wednesday, the 28th of November, right here in the Council's chambers, 140 West Pine Street.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. With that, we will move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening. Any general public comment?
Candy Matthew Jenkins, "Reading from the Brainwashing, Soviet Art of Brainwashing, Psycho-Politics, The Art of Mental Healing," read into the Congressional Record on American Activities, 1936 to 1939. "The Psycho-Politician may well find himself under attack as an individual or a member of a group. He may be attacked as a communist through some leak in the organization, or he may be attacked for malpractice. He may be attacked by the families of people whom he has injured. In all cases, his conduct in the situation should be calm and aloof. He should have behind him the authority of many years of training, and he should have participated fully in the building of defenses in the field of insanity which give him the sole claim to expertise on conditions of the mind. If he has not done his work well, an individual psycho-politician may be exposed by hostile groups. These may call into question the efficacy of psychiatric treatment such as shock, drugs, or general treatment. Not one of the cases cited need to be real, but they should be documented and printed in such a fashion as to form excellent evidence." When his allegiance is attacked, the psycho-political operative should explain his connection with Vienna on the grounds that Vienna is the place of study for all important matters of the mind.
Any other general public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda items there. We're approving unanimously in City Council Standing Committees. We save a little time on Mondays by considering these items all at once. There's only one tonight, so we're not going to save that much time. Ms. Raybine will read the consent agenda aloud, so those in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering, and we'll take comment before we vote. Ms. Raybine?
And that one item is claims, and the motion is to approve claims, which are the city's accounts payable totaling $1,013,456.28 for checks dated tomorrow, November 27, 2018.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience care to comment on the claims? Seeing none of that, discussion from council? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, Anderson votes yes. Armstrong, Armstrong votes yes. Becerra, Becerra votes yes. DeBary, DeBary votes yes. Harp, Harp votes yes. Hess, Hess votes yes. Jones, Jones votes yes. Merritt, Merritt votes yes. Ramos, Ramos votes yes. Van Losberg, Van Losberg votes yes. And West, West votes yes. Would anyone like to change their vote? That's eleven eyes and one absent.
And the consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to comments from city staff agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum, and we do have a community forum report this evening. Mr. Stevens?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Stevens. I'm here this evening to report on the November 15th Community Forum meeting. We had three presentations, first by Carol Garlington of the Muscat-Gully Neighborhood Council, and she spoke about developing strategies for neighborhood councils to work together to deal with citywide problems that extend beyond individual neighborhood council boundaries. We also had a presentation on the Downtown Master Plan Update presented by Pam Udall of the Downtown Missoula Partnership and Business Development Center. We also had a presentation from the Missoula Urban Transportation District, or otherwise known as Mountain Line. They presented the 2018 Strategic Plan Update. This was done by Bill Pfeifer, the Mountain Line Community Outreach Coordinator, and Vince Caristo, Mountain Line Project Management Specialist. In other business, the Neighborhood Large Project Fund Deadline has been extended to December the 10th. We are continuing to take applications for those funds. And there was also discussion of the upcoming Citizens Academy, which runs from January 15 through March 5. It'll be Tuesday evenings over an eight-week period, and the submission deadline for that is December the 28th. Our December meeting will be a short business meeting followed by our annual Christmas party, and I would like to announce some really nice news. The Community Forum set a new attendance record. All 18 neighborhood councils were present and accounted for at our last meeting, and we barely had room on the dais for everyone. They were hanging on by their fingernails. Thank you.
Good news. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Appreciate that. We'll move on to special presentations. We do have a proclamation this evening. Whereas the citizens of Missoula recognize that all children need love, support, security, and a place to call home, and whereas when birth families are unable to meet the ongoing needs of children born to them, adoptions that are humane, honest, and rooted in the understanding that adoption does not erase a child's connection to the family into which they were born are the best alternative, and whereas some children travel from many parts of the world to join their adoptive families in Missoula, Montana, and whereas some children in Missoula are in our local foster care program and live away from their birth families and substitute care, and many cannot return home and need the security and nurturing that adoptive families can provide, which is especially important for the many children with special needs, and whereas birth parents in Missoula need support and adoptive parents and families who have adopted children require and deserve community and public agency respect and support. Now therefore, I, John Inkin, Mayor of the City of Missoula, in the state of Montana, do hereby proclaim November 2018 in Missoula, Montana as Adoption Awareness Month. There'll be a celebration tomorrow at the Children's Theater. Look forward to that. We'll move on to public hearings. State law and our own council rules provide guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on a variety of issues, and following a staff report, council and I will take comment on the issue before us. Council typically votes on the item before it the same evening as the hearing unless one council member elects to return that to committee for further consideration. Our lone public hearing this evening is on an update to Title 20, our zoning ordinance, and Andrew Bowen is presenting this evening for Development Services. Andrew?
Hello. My name is Andrew Bowen with Development Services. This presentation's on a Title 20 Zone Code text amendment to incorporate the new aviation district in the Missoula Development Park overlay. The area shown in gray represents the 2018 annexation project. This project plans to include the airport, the industrial park, and Canyon Creek subdivision. Staff proposed two amendments to Title 20, the creation of the A Aviation District on parcels owned by the Airport Authority, and the Missoula Development Park overlay and apply standard zoning. The city's zoning will resolve inconsistencies between Title 20 and the MDP development guidelines. The following properties are not affected by the two proposed zoning text changes, the industrial park areas that are not part of the overlay, the two disparate school properties, vigilante parking and storage, and the expressway personal storage, and the Canyon Creek Village subdivision. This map shows the development park with the areas highlighted in colors representing the different specific sub-districts of the development park. This map shows the full scale of the annexation and the zoning districts that will be assigned with this annexation. Those districts are proposed to be the Aviation District, or the A District, C-1-2, M-1-2, M-1-R-2, OP-3, RT-5.4, and the Canyon Creek PUD. This map is the same as the previous map, but with the overlay highlighted with a black hatch and the industrial park. This map shows the location of the Aviation District. This property is owned by the Missoula County Airport Authority. Staff are proposing the creation of the Aviation District. This will be applied to airport-owned property. It is complementary to the open space and public districts of Title 20, but is tailored specifically to aviation and aviation-specific uses. The district represents the unique characteristics of the airport, and it also provides uses that are permitted for aviation and aviation-related industrial and commercial uses. Those uses include warehousing, manufacturing, mail and distribution centers, communication facilities, offices and businesses, support services, and hotels. The zoning is supported by the Missoula County Airport Authority. This is the land use designation for the area. It is designated public and quasi-public, which complements the Aviation District within the Open Space and Public Lands chapter. The following chapters and sections had changes to one or more aspects of the code in order to incorporate the Aviation zoning district. All new items were underlined in blue and shown, and all items removed were crossed out and shown in red. The district was added to the wireless communication facilities, and the new aviation use category was added to the use classification section. Staff also proposed the creation of a neighborhood character overlay to cover the development park. It will be known as the MDP, the Missoula Development Park and Neighborhood Character Overlay. This overlay will resolve any inconsistencies between Title 20 and the development guidelines standards currently in force. The areas shown with the black hatch represent the area within the development park inside the industrial park. The areas shown in red are the C-2-2 commercial properties located within the development park that will be zoned and subject to the development park. The map shown, the area shown in pink will be zoned M-1-2 and covered under the overlay, and the remaining properties not shown in the overlay will be zoned OP-3, public lands and institutions. Part of the Missoula Development Park is the Airway Boulevard corridor sub-district, which affects lots located adjacent to the Airway Boulevard. Those areas are shown with an X hatch and outlined with a red oval. Additional landscaping setbacks are required, additional landscaping and setbacks are required in this area. The MDP overlay addresses differences between Title 20 and the development guidelines. Those include residential allowances, including caretaker apartments and accessory apartments, building coverage, setbacks from drainage soils, landscaping, grading, drainage, and outdoor storage and fencing. This slide, slightly hard to read, is a clip from staff's production of a comparison chart that shows the difference between what is currently taking place in the development park and what will happen within the city area. Some of the aspects, when it goes into the city, will either be incorporated with the development park's overlay or is covered in Title 20. The following chapters within Title 20 were affected by the change to the overlay and the addition of the new character overlay within the Neighborhood Character Overlay Section 20.25. Planning Board heard a presentation on October 16 and recommended approval for the A zoning district and the MDP overlay. It is proposed to annex the areas shown in the previous slide with the effective annexation date of December 26. The zoning adoption date and the annexation date are set to coincide on the same day for seamless transition. It is proposed to assign the zones as followed. The Aviation District will be assigned to the airport properties. The M-1-2 and the C-2-2 will be assigned to the industrial and commercial properties within the development park and the industrial park. OP-3 will be assigned to all the parks and stormwater facilities within the overlay, and the overlay will be assigned to all the properties located within the development park. The remaining properties will be zoned upon annexation with the city zoning or comparable county zoning. Some of them are listed above. Part of the public outreach of the project, Development Services created a webpage dedicated to this project that was routinely updated with dates, times, and information on the project. The web address is listed below. The project was noticed in the Missoulian on November 11th and 18th. City Council's public hearing for zoning upon annexation is set for December 10th, and the effective date of both will be December 26, 30 days following the adoption today. In conclusion, staff recommend that City Council approve an ordinance to amend Title 20 city zoning to add the A Aviation zoning district to Chapters 20.20 and incorporate the revisions of the following chapters, 20.20, Open Space and Public Districts, 20.40, Uses and Specific Building Standards, 20.105, Use Classifications, and amend Title 20 city zoning, Chapter 20.25, establishing the NC-MDP, Missoula Development Park Neighborhood Character Overlay District, and amending Sections 20.25.040G. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Appreciate that. With that, I will open the public hearing. Does anyone care to comment on these amendments to Title 20? Mr. Easton?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Joe Easton, and tonight I represent Seven Hall LLC. We are owner of the 18.2-acre property at the 6,000 block of a expressway within the Missoula Development Park, and here tonight to discuss and hopefully recommend an amendment to the zoning code as it's proposed to resolve an inconsistency that's not included in both the presentation and in your staff report, and that is the sign code that rolls over from the existing county zoning and what would result in the resulting city zoning. We have had a project planned and in front of the county planning department for over a year, and if you've been out that way, you've seen the cul-de-sac, the alloy north that has already been permitted to the county standards and already underway. Marie Wilson with Intuitive will speak a little bit later about our design package for the first building that would go into that five-lot minor subdivision for Coca-Cola, which is a 60,000-foot warehouse and distribution center. Part of the county's code allows a secondary sign measured by less than 200 square feet of sign area and located on the secondary frontage of the building. The city zoning for the sign code allows only signs on the front of the building, and the secondary frontage would not be permitted. So, in our opinion, this was a diminishment or a downzone of the entitlement for signage in that Missoula Development Park. Our clients bought this location, and we are developing the project with the intention of having signage on that north side. There are five other, just from a small drive around today, five other examples of large signs on the north side or non-primary sides of buildings, and Gensco, Minuteman Aviation, Temp Right, and others. I think it would be an easy problem to solve, and I realize that time is a factor for your considerations, both of the zoning and of the annexation, and that is to roll forward into the new MDP overlay, continuing of the existing zoning sign code, the definition and the standards specifically for that overlay. Obviously, Title 20, the sign code applies throughout the city, but here's an opportunity to have the existing sign code within the county's development park, roll forward, and from our perspective in our project, not change what we've already drawn and have 95% drawings. Marie will speak after me and discuss what we proposed for a variance, which was the illumination only because the sign met, from the county standards, the sign size and the location. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm Marie with Intuitive Architecture. Just to reiterate what Joe briefly mentioned, we have gone through a process with this particular client. I don't think that it affects a lot of other parcels and a lot of other property owners that are going to be out there. They're not in the middle of design. We have already gone through this process, and there were two items that this particular owner cared enough about to go for a variance, to apply for a variance, one of which was overhead doors facing the frontage, which we wouldn't have to apply for if we are annexed. The second is the signage, and as Joe mentioned, the only thing that we were requesting a variance for was the type of illumination. And in that particular location, if we had more retail at that particular property, we would have been allowed to have this type of sign of the size in the location and at the height that is currently designed. If it's annexed, the location, sign, type, it won't be allowed at all. So, had we, there was one other thing that I wanted to mention. It's my understanding that had we gone through a variance and received approval for a size or something else that wasn't acceptable, that that variance would actually travel and go with the city ordinance and into the annexation, and I'm sure someone could correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding, that if we actually had received an approval for the variance, that we would be allowed to do that now.
Thank you. Any additional comment on the proposal?
Good evening. My name's Ken Johnson, president of Sea Manufacturing and owner as well. I've been out and was one of the first businesses 21 years ago in the Missoula Development Park, and we are currently going through an expansion. When we started 21 years ago, did not know what growth we would go through. We're on two acres, and so we're looking at adding 7,000 square feet, and I'm running into some issues for some of the requirements that are going to be flowing through to the ordinances that you guys are looking at, and I think you guys need to really take a really close look. A couple of the items that I'm running into is landscape and islands that are required out in my parking spot. I have semi-trucks that come in and out, and so I'm now required to put islands with landscaping, which then I'm going to have to put trees in, put more irrigation in, and the landscape requirements are requiring me to put in additional lawn, additional shrubs, and so reaching a point where the water usage is going to be, is going to increase. Granted, Missoula owns the water now for the company, but I would think it would behoove what we can do to, for our water resources, what can we do to help eliminate some of the lawns that we have to put in? I mean, majority of my lot is going to be lawn that I got to put water on consistently every day for trees and shrubs. So, really look at the requirements, and it is a real struggle, and we did it 21 years ago. The requirements, I feel, are out there. The other thing also, too, is annexation. I don't have a choice. When I built, I gave up my right to protest because I hooked up to a sewer and the water. There is not a single business person out there in industrial park. You find one that says they support the annexation. I do not support being annexed, and I don't think any other business owners out there support annexation. My taxes are going to go up probably 25 to 30%. That's going to happen. I'm not happy about that. So, this is going to happen. I wish there was some way I could protest it. Apparently, I can't, and I'm disappointed in that. But this whole process of going over to the city and where I'm at with my building permit, I'm trying to do it as fast as I can before the annexation occurs. But before you really vote on this, really take a hard look because it's an industrial park. What do you want? Do you want trees and shrubs, or do you want to encourage companies to come in and create some decent jobs in this area? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening?
Candy Matthew Jenkins, 1211 Cooper. I think I just got my answer, but I'm going to ask this question. How is this annexation and the taxes that go with it improve our lives as city owners, residential owners, and businesses? Are you going to spread the wealth or keep it all for yourself?
Anyone else on the zoning ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council? Mr. DeBary?
Hey, Andrew. I'm wondering if you can help sort some stuff out. So, I was under the impression that there is a set of development standards that go along with the Missoula Development Park. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And those are separate and apart from what's in the actual amended zoning for Title 20, correct?
That's correct. It's part of the overall kind of association that covers the development park.
Sure. And so, in those, can you describe what's in that set of standards?
It's rather comprehensive. It covers, I'm going to actually defer to one of them. I didn't actually do this part in depth.
Okay. But does it cover things like parking?
No, it's okay.
Sure.
So, it covers quite a lot. It covers signage, site lighting, architectural design standards. More or less, I think it's going to go primarily with the architectural design standards, so the building materials, the size, the scale. Obviously, things that correlate in Title 20 will be covered in Title 20, but anything that kind of stands apart will be covered through their association.
So, as I understand it, we could go ahead and approve what's in the motion before us to create an A zoning district and create the Neighborhood Character MDP overlay, and anything that's in that set of design standards can be amended administratively, correct? It doesn't need to come back to council for review?
So, anything that's laid out in the design standards that are enforced by the association would be just something that they take care of on their own. We have our own Title 20 standards, and then the overlay standards will be obviously something that we can change and tailor as the park develops and amend from there.
So, I guess where I'm So I guess where I'm headed is that anything that's not expressly discussed in the ordinance, but that's covered in the design standards, that's not exactly how I want to say it. So that there are things that are discussed in the design standards that aren't discussed in the ordinance and they are, for lack of a better way of saying it, a separate review process, maybe even by a different non-city organization. Does that address the concerns of Mr. Easton and Ms. Wilson with regard to signage?
So the signage code will be something that's facilitated by our code, so Title 20. And going along with some of the previous statements about the signage aspect, there are paths that applicants can take that if they can't comply with the standards laid out within Title 20, they can go to the Design Review Board to request a variation from the code. If it is something that the applicants need and the DRB votes for.
And does that hold too for Mr. Johnson's concerns regarding, I know it wouldn't go to the Design Review Board, but in terms of landscaping or parking requirements or things like that, that aren't in the zoning actual ordinance, but that are in the design standards or development standards?
That would fall to Title 20 again for the facilitation of that. And to go along with that, there are aspects within our landscaping chapters, so alternative compliance, which involves the landscape architect. Or if it's something that just doesn't cover that or they can't comply with, it's a variance from the code and that's supportive adjustment.
Okay. That's my set of questions for right now.
Further questions, Ms. Armstrong?
So what I'm hearing is that the folks that are now going to be covered under the new regulations will have to pay variance fees to now qualify with a new set of regulations? Possibly?
Yes and no. So kind of going along with what was previously said, they were going for variance to illuminate their signs. Our sign code allows the illumination. It's more or less the placement now that would be in question for where they want to place their sign on their development. So it's kind of just this, I guess, trade in regulations. We are, our sign code's pretty comprehensive in terms of measurements, types of signage, the things that can be done with signage, the placement of signage, in comparison to the development code where they have their set of standards and it's comprehensive in some respects, but not compared to ours. They're two different cups. So it's more or less, you get certain things with each. If that makes sense.
Ms. West?
I was curious if you knew how many entities might be kind of stuck in the slimbo of being, you know, like 95% done with a design process and being switched over. Are these the only two folks or are there more?
Those are the only two I've heard of. If they submit a building permit prior to the adoption and annexation into the city, they would be subject to the county regulations and complete the process with the county. Any building permits that are submitted following the annexation will be subject to the city regulations and the overlay standards and so on. So the only two I've heard of are the two that have been brought up. And so there's only so much that can be done. If we're willing to work with them and help them figure out their best route to get them to their end goal of development and their signage to the best of our code's abilities.
Ms. Mer?
So did I understand that there are already signs on buildings out there that will be non-conforming if the, if this goes through? I thought I understood Mr. Easton to say that there's already signs that are larger than what would be allowed under the Title 20?
It's very possible. With any change in code and regulation from one to another, you are bound to have areas that don't carry over. And that's where you look at those non-conforming. Potentially certain aspects that are, were variances in the county are going to be permitted uses and permitted types within the city. So it's hard to say without going sign by sign to kind of see what exactly is different from what is permitted in the county to what is permitted in the city.
Okay, I appreciate that. Can I have one follow-up? Given that we probably already have some non-conformity, would it be possible for us to grandfather in the Coca-Cola plants plans, given that they are so close already to completion? And I'm not exactly sure who I'm asking that question of.
I'll field that one. I think it's really challenging without having, without having the city be involved in the process today, right? We don't, we don't have a building permit, we don't have detrimental reliance, et cetera. If the process were in motion and in our jurisdiction, I think we could have that conversation, but I think the timing just is what it is. Further questions? Mr. Devari?
So I'm not sure, Andrew, if you know this, or maybe Denise or Mary do, but as I understood it, the county was aware of several provisions in the MDP development standards that were consistently issued. I don't know if consistently is the right word, but they've come up a number of times in terms of businesses doing development on their parcels. And those typically went to Board of Adjustment in the county and the Board of Adjustment routinely accepted them and granted those variances. And as I understood it from Mr. Haynes, a number of those issues were planning to be fixed, as it were, in this zoning and annexation process. And I'm wondering if you can articulate what those items are and if in fact we are fixing them, as it were?
I'm going to defer to Mary.
Ms. McCray?
Mary McCray with Development Services. So the primary, we met with Jamie Urbacher and other county staff. And one of the main things that they were routinely getting variances for was location of outdoor storage on corner parcels. So we went ahead and revised that language just to allow for what they'd been permitting by variance in the NC MDP overlay. Not aware of any other routine variance questions.
Further questions? Mr. Brownlaw?
Mary, I was going to try and catch you while you're up there. So I think we're, I think John already covered this, but I think it's just worth covering again. Could you describe what the alternative compliance route would be relative to the gentleman's concerns around like landscaping, for instance, and how we would work through an issue like that? We're not interested in creating giant fields of turf, but I'm wondering if you could kind of walk through what a process might look like?
Sure. Our landscaping standards in the NC MDP overlay provide a lot of what's currently required in the development park, but if someone does not want to comply with those standards, they just need to, excuse me, hire a landscape architect licensed in the state of Montana. He has to stamp the drawings or she stamped the drawings and they get approved for their plan. They have to have a narrative that explains why this design is a better design in the location and it just gets approved.
Mary, is, does our overlay require more with regard to landscaping than existing association guidelines?
We, again, we tried to pattern our landscaping standards to be consistent with what they currently have. And to be honest, the Land Owners Association guidelines were not something that we were implementing. So I guess I'm making the assumption that if they had their zoning, their development park zoning and these guidelines, that they would be cohesive and work well together. So our MDP overlay is reasonably consistent with what was required in the county zoning.
Thank you. Ms. Armstrong?
Mary, is there an instance where we're creating, I'm just, I'm having a really hard time with the fact we don't have a grandfather clause in for the folks that are already in operation and that we're applying this new overlay to them? Because I can see where they're operating daily and then we have improvised new standards that might cause them undue stress or undue cost. I know that hiring a landscape architect could be quite expensive and that's not something they had to do yesterday, but tomorrow they'll have to do it once this goes into effect. Is there any instance where they can be grandfathered in to the old standards? Or, I mean, I could see somewhere where someone is operating, you know, heavy machinery or they have 18-wheelers and we're asking them to put in more landscaping, which might be a visibility hindrance. And then we're saying, well, no, if you hire a landscape architect for $2,500 and bring that to us, then we'll allow you to do it. I'm having a hard time with that. Is there any instance where we could grandfather them in?
Once the overlay is applied through the annexation on the effective date, that is the law on, the zoning law on that property. So, you know, folks have known about this for quite some time. We've been talking to people, letting them know that if they are really that close on a project, they should submit it at the county and get it approved. The only project we've heard about is the subdivision that the Coke property is going on. Again, we've seen some schematic design for that and some initial site plan layout, but they haven't submitted for a building permit and have tried to work with them through their process on their project. Other properties that already exist that don't comply with the new won't have to make any changes that it doesn't, you know, unless they're proposing an addition that would require a building permit.
But again, our overlay largely matches what's on the ground today.
Yes. And what we tried to do is where Title 20 was a little more prescriptive, we allowed it. There's some uses under our industrial section in the M12 that would be allowed. There are some differences, but we tried to make it as consistent as we could.
Thank you. Further questions? Mr. Devari?
This is a comment that I'm going to form in, phrase in the form of a question.
You'll have opportunity for content later.
But it's remain to the point where we are in the discussion. And so, Andrew, you can answer this because it's a simple yes or no question. Basically, you know, is it true that the intent of the MDP overlay, the neighborhood character overlay, was to mimic as closely as possible what was already existing in county zoning? Plus, as Ms. McCray just said, provide some degree of flexibility that is inherent in Title 20 but doesn't exist in the county zoning?
That is correct.
Further questions, Ms. Mayor?
My question is for Mr. Easton, if you don't mind. What are the chances that you're going to be applying for your building permit before this goes into effect?
Joe Easton, very little because through this process, it has been clear to us from the Development Services Director that it would be obviously gaming the process to put in a billing permit under a standards that we know we qualified for, knowing that we had some elements that we didn't qualify for, to get in under the wire, so to speak. So we withdrew our subdivision request and we held off submitting building plan for permit, waiting for this process to go forward. Further to that, we were not aware of, and the public presentations, including this one, does not list sign code as change because it is my opinion, and I think it's consistent, that excluding secondary frontage signage in Title 20, when it is allowed in current county zoning and in the development park guidelines, is a diminishment. So it is not consistent from the county's zone and the county's development park guidelines and the proposed zoning.
Ms. West?
So I think my question's for Mary. So I was curious if you could speak to the relationship between the association guidelines and county standards and then soon to be city standards? I assume that the county does a similar process like we do where our zoning gets updated, you know, things get cleaned up and updated from time to time. And I'm curious if you could speak to the history of, you know, how the association updates their codes to stay in current, like current with any guidelines?
Mary McCray with Development Services. I'm not aware that, like in the city as well, where we have special districts, they don't get updated until they're rezoned. It's Title 20 that gets updated and our standard zoning districts. So I'm not aware of how many times the development park zoning as a special district has been updated or if it's been updated and the guidelines themselves.
I thought I saw Ms. Brownlow here. Dory, may I trouble you? With regard to the association, I'm making the assumption that it's analogous to a homeowner's association or a set of covenants? Is that correct?
That is correct. I'm Dory Brownlow and I'm the manager of the tax increment districts for Missoula County and have been in that role in a couple of different roles for a number of years. So yes, the association covenants, rules and regulations are like the homeowner's association. As I mentioned, color of siding and, gosh, it's really extensive, no animals, there's a number of things in there. But they are separate and different from the zoning regulations. And the zoning regulations, when I looked earlier, because I was curious, is when those were first passed, so it was 1996. So almost all the building out there has been, has been under these regulations. And I know signage is a big important deal. To my recollection, they've been amended through the county process twice since then, two or three times for some minor changes. But the association has, to my knowledge, not been amended.
Thank you very much. Further questions, Ms. Anderson? Any additional questions? Mr. Devari?
So I move that council adopt an ordinance to amend Title 20 city zoning to add the A aviation zoning district to Chapter 20.20 and incorporate revisions in the following chapters. 20.20, open space in public districts. 20.40, use and specific building standards. 20.105, use classifications. And to amend Title 20 city zoning, Chapter 20.25, establishing the NC-MDP Missoula Development Park Neighborhood Character Overlay District and amending Section 20.25.040G.
That motion is in order? Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Devari?
So as I mentioned earlier, I mean, with specific regard to the neighborhood character MDP overlay, the intention was to mimic as closely as possible what was currently in effect so as not to upset the apple cart, as it were. Clearly, there are at least two projects that are in the works that are experiencing some issues with the existing regs and what would become the city regulations as well. And I guess the only thing that I can offer in this regard is to, and I'm going to speak on behalf of Development Services, is to pledge our effort, best efforts to help them work through this process in a way that best meets their needs. And I understand Mr. Johnson's issues with regard to landscaping and semi-access, and I think there's probably ways that we can address that through the design process. And I'm sure too that there's a way we can address the signage-related issue. My hope is to, as best as possible, adhere to what the existing regs are, but to provide some degree of flexibility so that these two developments can work their way through the process and get on with things. But I'm going to support the motion because I think it's an important thing to do in order to amend Title 20, to create the text necessary to move forward with the annexation and to set the zoning districts necessary to finish this process.
Further discussion? Ms. Armstrong?
I'm reluctantly supporting this, only because I have full faith that Missoula City Development Services will work through the issues with our
City Development Services will work through the issues with, with our new customers and that we will not be placing undue hardship on them and giving them good value for their new tax dollars they're going to be paying. I, I believe that we will be granting variances and perhaps waiving fees if we come across something that clearly we've, as Dr. DeBary said, upset the apple cart. And I, I hope that is the case. So I will be supporting it.
Further discussion? Ms. Merritt?
I guess I understand what Mary has explained to us, that, that the intention was to, to mimic the existing regulations and not put something, what's perceived as a new burden on the property owners. But what I'm hearing from Mr. Easton is that this, in regards to the signage, this is a big difference in the regulation from what they were able to do before to what they're going to be able to do. And in addition to that, we have a number probably of other buildings that are already not in compliance. So I'm just going to wonder out loud here if there is any possibility of, of making the signage requirements different within this neighborhood character overlay. Given the location, I mean, this is way different than Broadway or Reserve Street or Higgins. And we're out there by the airport. It perhaps lends itself to having larger signs. I don't know. That's, I'm probably talking way out of my league, but maybe my thought there is something that Mr. DeBary could respond to.
Well, I, I can tell you that as you, as you wonder, turns out you're in a league with 11 other people. This is an opportunity, if you'd like to make an amendment, you can certainly do that.
Would, would, could we consider a friendly amendment, perhaps, to look at allowing larger signs than what the typical Title 20 regulations? I, I can't speak in specific language at this point in time, because this is all new to me at the moment.
Mr. DeBary?
It seems incredibly vague for me to accept a undescribed amendment as friendly, but I think we could ask Denise, perhaps. My concern is that we create two zoning, um, two sign, sets of sign ordinances that we then have to try to administer, one that's specific to the development park. Maybe that's just fine. And one that's specific to anywhere else. So I would see if one of staff would be interested in answering that.
And the rush to the microphone begins. Ms. McCray?
Mary McCray with Development Services. It's not so much even the size of signs, because we would allow that size of wall sign. Part of it is that they wanted a sign to face an interior side yard adjacent to another lot. And that wouldn't qualify as a building frontage. Our building frontages face a street or they face a parking lot with an entrance. So it was more the location of the sign. And I believe our maximum height is 22 feet, and I believe they wanted 30 feet and illuminated, I believe, to face the freeway at a distance so that cars driving by could see a large Coca-Cola sign. So they could request that through Design Review Board. Or if you wanted to amend the regulations, I would guess what you would have to request is to amend to not apply, to list the sign chapters, one of the chapters that do not apply, and to add the county sign ordinance for this zoning district back into the overlay.
And Mr. Von Lausberg, did you have?
Well, I can wait.
Further discussion? Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. I'm just going to kind of wonder out loud about something as well towards Dr. DeBary's direction. Obviously, there's going to be some growing pains associated with this. Is this something that we could take up during our annual Title 20 update? That we could talk about the zoning in a few months out there? And obviously, that's all, a whole new development. We can work with the folks out there to come up with something for the signage that maybe is more applicable to their geographic area?
Yes.
Ms. Merritt?
I would like to withdraw my request to amend it. After understanding from what Ms. McCray just explained, I think that would be wise. This is far more complicated than I'm really ready to articulate at this point.
Further discussion? Mr. Von Lausberg?
Yeah, I'll simply say, I'm supportive of the motion. I appreciate the concerns about some of the particulars here, but there's paths to resolution. There's multiple paths to resolution for these issues. The landscaping one, as we've described, Design Review Board, they may not always be the most ideal, but there are paths to resolution. Title 20 maintenance is another one. We also went through a more extensive review on signs. And I can't remember if that was during maintenance or separate from maintenance, separate. And so there's a path there as well. And I, I think those going through that system provides an opportunity for relief where it's merited.
Further discussion? Ms. Hart?
I will not be wondering aloud. Just kidding. But I do want to say that this is a complicated issue, as evidenced by every one of us wondering aloud many times. And I think what, I think what we all recognize is that when, when we make significant changes to a zoning district and, and bringing it into the city, we recognize that some people are not going to be happy with those results. And the reality is that we will never be able to please everybody. But at the same time, I, and kind of echoing along what Ms. Armstrong said earlier, we will do everything in our power to mitigate those burdens as they, as they come up to the best of our ability. And with that, I will be voting in favor of this motion.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the ordinance to create the zoning districts, let's see, we start with Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos. Ramos votes yes. Von Lausberg. Von Lausberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. And Anderson. Anderson votes yes. I have 11 eyes. Actually, I only have two. But the vote is 11 eyes and one absent.
Wow. Thank, thank you, Ms. Raybine. The motion is approved. We have no additional public hearings this evening. I will pass on communications from the mayor. We'll begin general comments from council members with Ms. Merritt.
With the lovely snow that we had falling over the weekend, I just want to remind everybody to take it easy out there. Be careful. Give yourself a little extra time when you need to go somewhere in the mornings or in the evenings and be kind to your fellow travelers.
Ms. Harp? Ms. Anderson?
Thank you for, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing November as adoption month. As someone who, my, both my parents are adopted, which is sort of an oddity. And it's very fun, because I have four family trees. So it is, we are so blessed in our family to have had that option and have a large extended family. And so I think it's important to recognize that families come in all shapes and forms and we should all be lucky to have people we love, especially during the holiday season.
Ms. West?
My family grew by a mother-in-law and a new father-in-law a couple of years ago, which is great, because I met my adopt, my husband's birth parents. Turns out he had two birth brothers, full brothers, and I have some nieces. So that was also a really fun experience. And I also want to remind everyone to come downtown for the parade of lights on Saturday. It'll be super fun and festive.
Mr. Hess? Mr. Ramos? Ms. Becerra? Mr. Von Lausberg?
I would be remiss to not offer my congratulations to NASA's Mars insight lander team on their successful landing today. I'm, get as nervous about these as ever. So thank God.
Do you get demerits if things go wrong still?
Ms. Jones? Mr. DeBary? Ms. Armstrong?
It's shoveling time again, people. People do walk to work. They do ride their bikes. Please get out and shovel your walks by nine o'clock in the morning.
We have no committee reports this evening, nor any items of new business. Any additional items to be referred? Seeing none of those, I'm sorry, no? Okay. Seeing none of those. I'm sorry. We took care of that. Yep. Any miscellaneous communications, petitions, reports or announcements? Seeing none of those. As always, I thank you for your service. We will be adjourned.